A good evening everyone and welcome to the Crestwood School District's Regular Board Meeting dated for Monday, September 28th of 2020. I would now like to ask Madam Secretary if she would do roll call. My apologies, the time is 7:00 P.M.
President Ansonik absent. Ms. Berry here, Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Janoon.
Here.
Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
And Ms. Krasanik.
Mrs. Krasanik.
She's on mute.
Colleen. Okay, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. And at this time, we have a reading for the Consent Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Okay, recommendation, action, Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the Consent Agenda, which include the September 28th, 2020 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, September 14th, 2020, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, September 14th, 2020.
All right, is there support?
Support.
And that report comes from Trustee Kaminsky. Are there any questions? Uh, Trustee Fawaz.
Yes, um, for the minutes from the September 14th meeting, the minutes did not capture our whole meeting, especially with the resolution and reference to myself. It only had a summary of what you guys said and nothing of what I stated. So, um, it's inaccurate. It's not depicting everything.
All right, that will be duly noted, thank you. Moving on to business report.
Can we, um, take a...
We didn't vote.
Yeah, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, thank you very much. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone not in favor?
Nay.
And please note for the record that nay from Trustee Fawaz.
Ms. Krasanik, are you there? Oh, she just can't hear us, okay.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have her come, go out of the meeting and come back in. She wants to give just one minute.
Okay. All right, I do believe that Vice President Krasanik is back. I'm gonna wait to see if she pops up on the screen.
Can you hear me?
There she is.
Now we can, yes.
Okay, dear me.
Colleen, can you vote on the Consent Agenda? Is it a yay or a nay?
I vote, yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right then, uh, moving on into our business report, I'd like to turn this over to, um, where's, Mrs. Morgan?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, there you are, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I have three action items to discuss. Um, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for the upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by the administration for purchase. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition as per attachment for A1.
Support.
Krasanik?
Yep. Where's Ed?
I do apologize to the members of the board and those, uh, in the view, um, watching this via, whatever it might be, I'm losing my connection, so I do apologize.
Okay, we're voting?
Uh, yes, I believe it was the approval of requisitions. I did have a support, a motion read by, uh, Secretary Berry. Was there a second?
Colleen did, Krasanik.
All right, and with that, is there any, are there any questions? And, oh yes, uh, Trustee Fawaz.
Yeah, on the attachment, it shows, um, multiple charges for Amazon, so I'm just wondering what those were. And then also, um, for the printing company, and I know it shows for packets, but it shows like over 24K. Is that all for packets?
They were all for the homework packets done throughout the beginning of the year, um, to go through to get everybody home and set up before school started. It was each building, the high school and the middle school as well. So yes, it was for everyone. And we'll be utilizing CARES Act money for it, so it will not come out of general funds.
Okay, and then the tech items for Amazon?
The tech items for Amazon, there were some cables that we purchased, some batteries, and I'm trying to look at the other one. Different adds and ends of that sort, that they just, it's easier to get through Amazon.
Okay, thank you. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, we will move on to the next item. Mrs. Morgan?
Thank you, number two, approval to initiate investment grade audit. The Crestwood School District continues to make strides in updating the buildings. There were many concerns addressed with the previous bond, however, there are still areas where the district can become more efficient. In order to identify these needs, we would like, we would need to do an investment grade audit on the buildings. This would include an in-depth walkthrough to identify areas needing improvement. We would also be able to have a third party evaluate the work that was previously completed by the bond. By completing an investment grade audit, the district would be able to confirm the validity of the previous work and identify any deficiencies, putting closure to the previous bond project.
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Krasanik?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education give administrative, administration approval to move forward with the investment grade audit.
Support.
That is reported by Trustee Kaminsky. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Morgan?
Thank you, number three, approval of CTE partnership. The Crestwood School District has been part of a longstanding agreement with Dearborn Heights Number Seven, Westwood Community Schools, and Wyandotte Public Schools to provide various opportunities to students within the district. The Career and Technical Education Agreement allows our students to participate in technical programs currently not offered at Crestwood High School. The agreement will run July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021. It is an excellent opportunity for our students to obtain experiences otherwise available to them.
Mr. Chair.
Um, Madam Secretary.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year career tech partnership as outlined in attachment for A3. Support.
I believe that was from Mrs. Janoon first. Okay, correct. Uh, any questions?
Hi.
Mrs. Fawaz?
Yeah, in reading this, Penny, it says, um, so the high school students' career partnerships, students shall be full-time students of their home district, considered for the purpose of earning credits, you know, as you just explained. But then it also states, students who attend Westwood Cyber High School or Westwood Alternative School will be enrolled in Westwood Community School District, and Westwood would collect their full state aid and eligibility. So does Crestwood, um, get anything for them at that point? Or they're, they're actually considered Westwood students, they're no longer Crestwood students?
No, that's, that's talking about the Westwood Online Program. So Westwood has two programs. They have an alternative program online that they consider separate from their high school. And so that program, they identify it separately and would consider them to be Westwood students. They're not our students that would be, um, Westwood students.
So when they're physically there, they're still our students?
Correct, yes.
So what was the portion that said, uh, Crestwood will have .25 of District Seven?
Because we get .25 of, because of the number of hours that the students attend at Crestwood, we get .25 of the FTE from District Seven. We utilize District Seven's FTE, and that's what's collected.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Hearing no others, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for your items. And we will now be moving on to our personality. And that is Dr. Lazar.
I think she, she left the meeting. Probably kicked out.
Me, no, I accidentally kicked myself out while trying to unmute.
All right, and I now will turn it over to you, Dr. Lazar.
All right, good evening, everybody. We have, um, eight action items on the agenda tonight. Um, the first of which is the appointment of a kindergarten teacher for Kinlock Elementary. Danielle Fleming. Ms. Fleming holds a Bachelor's of Science in Education from Eastern Michigan University, a Master's of Elementary Teaching from Mary Grove College, and an Educational Specialist Degree from Wayne State University. She brings with her 17 years of teaching experience, is a certified KRA trainer, and has experience as a data coach and Title I teacher. Ms. Fleming has also presented professional development in her, in her role as a math leader.
And, I mean, Mr. Chair.
Vice President Krasanik?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Danielle Fleming as a kindergarten teacher for Kinlock Elementary. According to the CFT Contract Schedule A, MA Step 6, effective October 12th, 2020. See Attachment 5A1.
Support.
I apologize, I didn't see where that came from. I didn't recognize the voice.
Berry.
Oh, okay, Secretary Berry supports. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Fawaz?
What district did she come from, Linda?
Give me a second, let me pull, pull up her, sorry. There were many of them, I lost track.
I didn't see it for any of them, actually.
Is that something that the board would like me to include, is where their previous experience comes from? Because some of them... So, that's something that I can do from now on, if you'd like.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
In the past, you've always had it in there, so that's why I was curious, because I didn't see it in this one.
I don't remember, okay, um...
And it has always been included.
Dearborn, the last district she worked at, but she's also worked in, in several charter schools prior to that.
Yeah, I, 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 let me just interject. I, I know that sometimes it is and sometimes it is not. I can't remember the last time that I had seen it. But I would say that, if there is a question, probably if someone could contact the administrator prior to, sometimes we may or may not have that information readily available. Any other?
She worked at Dearborn for the past four years, but was at Academy in Detroit prior to that.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, uh, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And just for the record, Madam Secretary, is the motion read twice, once by the person making the motion and then second by the chair?
Yes. Yes.
All right, so I will, I will follow that, uh, so that we are in order. Uh, it is recommended that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Danielle Fleming as a kindergarten teacher for Kinlock Elementary School, according to the CFT Contract Schedule A, MA Step 6, effective October 12th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, next.
Um, the next action item is for kindergarten teacher for Highview Elementary, Ms. Lindsay McParlane. Ms. Part, Ms. McParlane holds a Bachelor of Arts in Education from Wayne State University. She has eight years of experience in teaching and has been a part, an active part of her Curriculum, Social, and School Events Committee.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Secretary Berry?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lindsay McParlane for the position of kindergarten teacher at Highview Elementary, according to the CFT Contract, BA Step 4, effective October 5th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A2. Support.
Uh, support from Trustee Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lindsay McPar, McPar, McCarlane for the position of kindergarten teacher at Highview Elementary School, according to the CFT Contract BA Step 4, effective October 5th, 2020. See Attachment 5A2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, motion approved, thank you.
The third action item today is for the science teacher at Riverside Middle School, Ms. Zainab Sakaaf. Ms. Sakaaf holds a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Education and a Master of Arts in Educational Technology from the University of Michigan Dearborn. Ms. Sakaaf earned several scholarships throughout her college career. She has four years of teaching experience and has been involved in student mentoring programs like the Read to Me Program and science-based projects through the Hawk Woods Nature Center.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Zainab Skaaf for the position of middle school science teacher at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT Contract, MA Step 2, effective October 12th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A3.
Support.
Mrs. Krasanik, uh, supported by Vice President Krasanik, that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the hiring of Zainab Sakaaf for the position of middle school science teacher at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT Contract, MA Step 2, effective October 12th, 2020. See Attachment 5A3. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
For discussion, Ed?
Oh, my apologies, are there any questions?
Yes, I, I don't want to hold up for each one, but I am interested to see where each person came from, so if you want, you can just send it to me offline.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Eddie, say signify by saying aye, because nobody's jumping in after you say, "All those in favor." Just say signify by saying aye.
Thank you, thank you, Vice President Krasanik.
Thank you.
Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Action item number four is for an ELA teacher for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Alexandra, Alexandria Huseki. Ms. Huseki holds a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn and a Master of ESL Education from Wayne State University. She comes with 10 years of teaching experience and has served as an instructional resource teacher and coach. Ms. Huseki has participated in school-wide assessment administration, has presented professional development at a different school level, and is highly involved in MTSS and school improvement properties within a school.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Secretary Berry?
Go ahead, Ms. Krasanik.
No, you go on, I, I'll take the next one, or I, I'll take another one.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Alexandria Huseki for the position of middle school ELA teacher at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT Contract, MA Step 7, effective October 12th, 2020. See Attachment 5A4.
Support.
I believe was from Trustee Janoon? Is that correct? Okay. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Alexandria Huseki for the position of middle school ELA teacher at Riverside Middle School, according to the CFT Contract, MA Step 7, effective October 12th, 2020. See Attachment Schedule 5A4. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Signify by saying aye.
Signify by saying aye, my apologies, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, action item number five is for the Assistant Principal at Riverside Middle School, for Ms. Amy Bertolizio. Ms. Bertolizio holds a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Windsor and a Master of Arts in Teaching from Wayne State University. She brings 25 years of experience in education, ranging from teaching to administration, having held roles as both an assistant principal and principal. In her tenure as a teacher, Ms. Bertolizio exhibited a strong ability to build relationships with students. As an administrator, she developed strong skills in school improvement planning, building professional learning communities, and in implementing and leading restorative practices. Ms. Bertolizio demonstrates not only a deep understanding of educational research, but also has a clear understanding of how to translate research into practice. Her experiences in ESL and special education also offer a perspective that will bridge the needs of these subgroups in the school.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Vice President Krasanik?
I move, with great honor, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Amy Bertolizio for the position of middle school assistant principal at Riverside Middle School, according to the Administrative Contract Class 2 Step 1, effective September 29th, 2020. See Attachment 5A5.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the hiring of Amy Bertolizio for the position of middle school assistant principal at Riverside Middle School, according to the Administrative Contract, Class 2 Step 1, effective September 29th, 2020. See Attachment 5A1.
Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair.
Open for, uh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Fawaz? I will call on you next, Charlie, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Um, yes, I just, I have a couple of questions with her being, with that position being for assistant principal. Um, how many applicants did we have for this position? And then was this also the same process we used for the principals, where we included like the parent committee? And was that committee given all of the resumes? Or were they given like the last, like the filtered six?
They were given the filtered, I, I mean, there were, I want to say 140 resumes that came in for this position as well. Um, so to have a committee go through that many, um, I think would be quite tedious. Um, it's, it's the same consistent hiring process that we've gone through each time. Um, and yes, there were four, hang on, I can pull up the invite and I can tell you, there were three parents on the committee. Um, if I'm not mistaken, there was a representative from special education, a representative from the ESL department, um, the social workers, um, from, we invited a social worker from middle, high school, and elementary to participate. I can't remember if all of them were able to attend. Counselors, the principal, and the assistant principal, uh, from the school. So there were a total of, I'm sorry, there were, um, 14, no, no, more. 16 people on the interview committee.
So that committee got to see how many?
Um...
Like the, they were given like six of them, 10 of them?
Um, one, two, I'm sorry, it was early in September, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, uh... There were originally supposed to be eight, one of them canceled the day of the interview, so we ended up interviewing seven candidates.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Krasanik, you had a question?
I just have a comment. This just goes to show you, with that many applicants, how qualified Ms. Bertolizio is. I've known her for many, many years. She formerly worked here in the Crestwood School District, and she comes with the highest recommendations from this board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs., uh, I, I did see you, uh, Trustee Kaminsky, and then I saw Mrs., or Trustee Janoon, so I'm gonna go with...
That's okay, Sue, Sue raised her hand first, and she'll have the icon, like I do, so it's okay.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you, I wanted to echo what Mrs. Krasanik said. Um, Mrs. Bertolizio is a wonderful asset to our school district. I also have known her for years, and I'm really excited to see her coming back, especially with our new momentum and moving forward. Uh, my other comment is, just in an effort to be fair to our administrators, I'd like to remind everyone that usually our study session is to bring up any questions we might have before the meeting, so that we can get it out there and give our administrators the chance to get their information together. So hopefully in the future, we can adhere to that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, I was gonna comment on that, uh, at the end of this, because it does create a bit of disruption for administrators to have to try to dig this information up. Uh, if there are questions that you have previous to a regular board meeting, we encourage, I encourage, as well as the president encourage you to contact the administrator via email or telephone, uh, or bring up these items during our study session. Thank you. With that, I have...
That's the purpose of a study session.
Uh, Mrs. Janoon?
So, I, I just want to clarify one thing first. Ms. Mrs. Bertolizio is currently employed with the district. Yes, so she's not, yeah, so she is a current employee, which is, personally, something that I think that I asked, you know, very early on, with promoting from within and kind of, I mean, so long as the person is obviously qualified, we want it, but we want to, you know, that would be the first step or the first route that I'd prefer to see. Um, second of all, I, prior to being on the board, took part, um, I can't even remember how many, um, interview committees, and it is very, very detailed, like, there's, there's a lot of steps in the process. And prior to Mrs. Dr. Lazar bringing this, um, about, this process about, um, we didn't know who, I mean, there was literally only three people on a, on a panel, on a committee, and they chose the employees. So this gives the opportunity for, you know, plenty of people to see who that person is, who the, you know, who's interviewing. And I give you a lot of credit, because I know that it takes a lot of time, and sitting through interviews takes all day, and, um, I end up with a headache afterwards, but it's definitely worth it. And I, it was something that I really wanted to see implemented. And we are not gonna be able to see 140 applicants, even if I wanted to. I mean, there are ti, you know, but there's just, it's just, there's no way. So, thanks, Dr. Lazar, for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Uh, trust, or I'm sorry, uh, Madam Secretary?
Yes, I wanted to echo, thank you, Anja, for bringing that up, because there were situations where we had to stop somebody from being hired, because we didn't know what we were getting. But the process is so detailed, and so, uh, there's integrity in the process, and thank you so much for doing that. And I wanted to say to Ms. Bertolizio, thank you for applying and welcome aboard, and we're very excited to have you. Thank you.
Are you guys hearing children? I'm hearing children.
Yes, we are hearing children.
Okay.
Welcome, Ms. Bertolizio.
Welcome, yeah, Amy.
Ms. Bertolizio is here with us.
All right, and, there she is. Welcome aboard, and I would just like to, uh, echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Amy, welcome back. It was an absolute pleasure to see you and to know that you are a part of our community and our school building, and you are truly going to be a wonderful asset. And as they say, between rising to the top, and here you are. Welcome back to Crestwood.
Thank you so much, you guys, I'm so grateful and so excited for the opportunity. It is going to be great. Can't wait to work with the Crestwood team again.
All right.
We can't wait to work with you.
Absolutely. All righty, oh, I'm sorry, uh, yes, Miss, uh, Trustee Fawaz?
So I, I just have one more comment. So, especially like, like Trustee Janoon, you were on that committee before. So one of the concerns or questions I would have for that committee, if you're given six people's resume to look at, or seven people's resumes, and there was actually 100 that put in, just throwing numbers out, you don't know that those six, okay, were the best six out of the 100. And no offense to anybody, okay, but yes, we're, the process, okay, you're only going to be able to choose out of those six.
Trustee Garcia, if I, Chairman Garcia, if I may respond, please?
Uh, yes, please, I, I appreciate that, and Mrs. Janoon, I will call on you, uh, right after.
Trustee Fawaz, Board of Education and Community. I was hired as a superintendent to represent the school board and to make these decisions. I was hired as a superintendent to represent the school board and to make these decisions. I mean no disrespect to people, Fawaz, as we have discussed this in the past, and a guarantee that I made to this Board of Education, the community, was no surprises. I have been very clear and transparent, and the Board of Education approved this hiring process back in December, when I presented this process to the entire board during study session and during evaluation. The reason why I'm speaking up at this point is because this is not the first time it's come up. It is the responsibility of the superintendent and his team, which in this situation, myself, Dr. Lazar, and Ms. Penny Morgan, who filtered through the 160 applications or whatever it was, if it was 160, if it was 10, there is more than just the application coming in, it is the qualifications, the experiences, certifications. Many people apply for many positions who do not have the certifications or qualifications for the position, because of the way the system is set up. And I do know that Dr. Lazar is working with AESOP, which is our frontline, uh, system of, of retrieving applications, to have checkboxes where in turn, we can check boxes and just push out people who don't have the minimum qualifications. There is no school district that I am aware of, and if, if there are, if there are, I would say it'd be a very small number that have, um, anyone beside the central office administration and the principal of the building review resumes and/or applications. It is our responsibility to filter those applications or resumes down to the top seven to 10 candidates for an interview. In this situation, we selected the ones we selected based on their experiences, as well as the needs of Riverside Middle School. We will continue to follow this process. This process is a proven process. This process is also part of MESV's process, so therefore, this is not a process that we have created on our own. It is a process that we have adjusted and made fit our school district. If there is anyone in the community or anywhere, and I've said this before and I'll reiterate it again, that have a question or concern about whom we bring forward and/or to the Board of Education, if it's a teaching position, custodial position, administrator, whomever it is, I would recommend that anyone, or even if it's a board member, we can put all the paperwork and the process there. I appreciate the fact Mrs. Janu mentioned it, but I will also say this. Every teacher and/or parent that has been part of this process has complimented this process and has said that we appreciate the fact that when we come in, there is a clear and concise message that all interviewers and interviewees follow, and that it is consistent for every interview, no matter the, the position, the title, the salary, or what it may be. Therefore, I want to ensure the Board of Education and the community that we will only choose whom we believe is the best for the position, at the time of the position, and for whom we believe will help take Riverside to the next level. I do not recruit, nor does anyone on my team recruit, nor do I or anyone on my team select specific districts and/or clientele. People have the right to apply. Many people that myself, Dr. Lazar, and Mrs. Morgan know have applied for positions who have not even received an interview. I just want to make that clear. I don't want there to be any misconception by the community, otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. uh, Trustee Janu?
So I was just gonna say, you know, once again, that, you know, although it's, I don't think anything is ever going to be perfect. You can, sometimes there's going to be somebody on paper who's going to look amazing, and they may turn out to not be amazing, and sometimes we just have to trust the process and trust the people that we put in those positions to get us, you know, that's why they are in that position. And I do trust, um, Dr. Lazar, and I do trust Dr. Musalem. And it's not, not to say that if I did not have a question that I wouldn't feel, and I think they both know that, I'm gonna be the first person to call you out for questioning. And I don't, I mean, it, I told, you know, Dr. Musalem from the beginning, I'm going to be, I'm a parent first, and, you know, I, I think that after watching several meetings where we're hiring people, that this is just, it's, I, I'd like to see this process just, you know, we, we've done all of that, and as they said, questions probably should just be for the study session, and I think it's supposed to be a time for Mrs. Bertolissio to celebrate, and it's supposed to be her moment, and once again, congratulations, and thank you, Dr. Lazar, Dr. Musalem.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Ms. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Vice President Krasanek?
Uh, very mu, I, Ms. Janu, you're new, but you just said it all. This should have been discussed at a study session, this is a regular meeting. I'm embarrassed that Ms. Bertolissio had to sit through this, because this is not what we should be doing. We should be applauding her selection, and from now on, if there's a, a serious question like this before the, the, the time to ask these questions is before the meeting at the study session. This should not be discussed right now. I'm not happy with that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Uh, was there a vote?
Go ahead.
Was, there was no final vote, so, uh, what I'd like to do is just make one last comment. I agree with what has been said by members of the board, that we, we, this, you know, questions like this should be addressed prior to, which is at the study session, as well as the fact, thank you, Dr. Musalem, for stating that the Board of Education, in its entirety, uh, is very, we all should be very well, well aware of the process. And as we can see, there are no surprises, there is no hidden agendas, uh, and, um, the cream of the crop is gonna come to the top, that this administration is going to choose what they feel is going to be the best candidate, and will move this forward. Uh, with that, I'm gonna now move on to taking a vote. Those in, all those in our favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Next.
And Madam Secretary, can you please note for the record? From, uh, Trustee...
I can't.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You are very...
Thank you and welcome, we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
We're so happy to have you.
Welcome, Ms. Bertolissio. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, likewise. So I, this is my time to leave, right?
Please stay, please!
All right. We will now move on to, uh, action item number six.
Nadia, you've gotta, you said I can't...
Action item number six is for the Riverside Middle School Custodian Position. Um, the recommendation is for Mr. David Steins. Mr. Steins has a Bachelor of Accounting degree from Eastern Michigan University. He has worked as an office manager for 25 years and has recently retired. He is from his old job. He is very committed to community involvement and student support through the Robotics Club and being the marching band treasurer.
Mr. Chair?
Vice President Krasanek?
I move that Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of David Steins for the position of custodian at Riverside Middle School, according to the custodial contract, Step One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A6.
Support.
Support, support from...
Barry.
Secretary Barry? That the Crestwood Board of Ed, I'm sorry, uh, are there any comments? That the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Mr. David Stein for the position of custodian at Riverside Middle School, according to the custodial contract, Step One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A6. What were my words again?
Signify by saying aye.
By saying aye, there we go. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
Okay, action item number seven is also for a custodian at Riverside Middle School. Um, this recommendation is for Mr. Christopher Meekins. Mr. Meekins has served as, in a custodial capacity for nine years. He's very dedicated to getting the job done and working to help others.
Madam, Mr. Chair?
Vice President Krasanek?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Christopher Meekins for the position of custodian at Riverside Middle School, according to the custodial contract, Step One, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A7.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the hiring of Christopher Meekins, custodian at Riverside Middle School, according to the custodial contract, Step One, effective... Other documentation as required by law, see attachment 5A7. Are there any...
Favor, signify.
Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on?
And the last recommendation for tonight is for one, for a school secretary for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Hoda Karazi. Ms. Karazi holds a Bachelor of Arts in Business and a Master Degree in Business and Administrative Science from St. Joseph University. She has been with the Crestwood School District for three years, working at this pre-school.
Mr. Chair?
Trustee Janu?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the hiring of Hoda Karazi for the position of secretary at Riverside Middle School, according to the secretary contract, Class, Class, Class Ones, Class One, Step I, I'm sorry, Step One, effective September 29th, 2020. See attachment 5A8.
Support.
Supported by Secretary Barry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approves the hiring of Hoda Karazi for the position of secretary at Riverside Middle School, according to the secretary correction, secretary contract, Class One, Step One, effective September 29th, see attachment 5A8. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, moving on.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so happy to see, to see that we're getting our team together over at the middle school. Congratulations to Ms. Karazi, and, uh, she's got big shoes to fill over there, we're very happy to have her over there.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, we are now moving on to the compens, uh, compen, compens...
Compensatory.
Compensatory.
There we go, compensatory education report, and I see that there are no items on the agenda, but we want to thank Dr. Lazar. And I will now turn the next portion of the meeting over to our superintendent, uh, Dr. Musalem.
I think you're on mute.
There you go.
Hi there.
It has to happen every so often. All right. Well, I wanted, I was saying, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Board of Education, so for the superintendent's report, I have one action item and two informational items, as well as some updates. So our action item, uh, prior to getting into the action item, uh, Michigan Department of Education, under the new, uh, COVID guideline, states that we must, uh, once a month, which would be, um, at one of our regular scheduled board meetings, vote upon, uh, where our, uh, fall 2020 plan for COVID, uh, learning will go for the next month. So each month, we will have to have a, a vote, so the next vote will be the second board meeting in the month of October. But for this board meeting, being that we've been in this now for four weeks, um, I am making the recommendation, uh, to continue the fall 2020 plan. On August 10th, the Board of Education approved to start the 2020 school year online. I am requesting that the Board of, uh, the Board approved continuation of the online plan with reconsideration at the October 26th regular board meeting.
Mr. Chair?
I believe that was Trustee Kaminsky first?
You go ahead, let's do it.
Thanks. Um, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the continuation of the online fall 2020 plan.
Support.
Supported by Vice President Krasanek, that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the continuation of the online fall 2020 plan. Any discussion?
Um...
Trustee Kaminsky?
Um, yes, I just want to say that I think everybody is sad that we need to move forward with this plan, and nobody wants to have to do this, but with the numbers increasing, I just, for me personally, don't feel we have any choice. So, um, parents, I know this isn't what you want to hear, but our duty is to protect our kids first, and that's what I'm doing when I recommend this.
Here, here.
Mr. Chair?
I could see firsthand, uh, Ruth is Janu, and then after that, I...
I think Nadia was first, she doesn't have a handout, so I'll let her go first.
Yeah, my icons are not here, which is strange.
My apologies, because I'm looking at the screen and trying to write the notes.
That's okay.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go...
I just, I want to know where these kids are coming from.
Secretary Barry?
Okay, um, I guess this is good to give us time to hear the parents' input, so hopefully we can prepare, um, where they can give us their feedback, and we can watch the numbers for the next couple of weeks and see where we're at, and start to put a plan in place. So this is, this will give us time now, get the input from the parents, thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, and I, then after that, I'll go with, uh, next hand up, I see is, uh, Mrs. Janu?
So I think, um, I think it may have been just, and as a parent myself, I think it may have been a little bit better if maybe we would have been able to, even if this is the way, the route that we ended up taking, I think it would have been good to get the input of the parents prior to the meeting. I don't want anybody to feel like we are not hearing them before we vote on something like this, because it is a big deal, so, um, I have kids in the district still, and I know I've expressed some of my concerns, um, and I do have concerns, I, I don't, I don't feel that we have an option, other than continuing virtually, only because of the restrictions that are put in place on the district, but I do feel like we still need to hear what the parent, like, I know the questions and answers are coming at the end of the meeting, but at this point, we're already gonna have voted on it, and I don't feel that that gives parents the opportunity to let us know how they're feeling. Um, I have, I know, Dr. Musalem, we, we've discussed it, and I've discussed it with a couple of the principals as well, um, with some concern with the, with rigor and, and things like that. But again, I just think, next meeting, we need to, um, we need to hear the parents' concerns before we vote on this.
All right, and then, are there any others? Uh, I see one, um, Trustee Fawaz?
Um, so, yes, I, I would have liked to have actually have heard from the parents, because I know a lot have actually already reached out, um, but I'd like to actually, I mean, I know it's probably, it's too late for this vote, but at least for the next one, I'd like to see, i- if anything, if we can't handle it with the whole district, at least at the elementary level, doing a, uh, hybrid maybe situation, starting there, and seeing how that goes. I think they're the biggest, uh, priority, I think the middle school and high school do a little bit, um, better than the young, you know, young kids. Um, that's the biggest concern that I'm finding right now, is with the, you know, K through five, or K through four. Um, so, a- and then watching a lot of the schools that have already went back, they seem to actually be doing pretty well with it, so I, I'd like to actually see a hybrid for elementary, even if we stayed longer for, uh, middle school and high school.
All right, thank you. All right.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I just saw your hand go up every time I hit the screen, things change.
No, no, it's okay, I was just wondering, is there any way of, even as a board meeting, even halfway through, to discuss an option, like Ms. Fawaz is saying? Um, I'm, I'm not saying that it's something that we can do, but, I mean, just, because if we have to vote come four weeks from now on it again, maybe, you know...
Are you at, are you saying maybe try to put together a study session?
Something, yeah, I mean, because if it's something that we do consider doing with elementary school kids, that maybe we need to discuss it prior to voting on it.
At the next meeting.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Dr. Musalem, is it possible that, uh, on one of our off Mondays, we could try to do a 5:5:30 meeting, and, um, that would give you an opportunity of gathering what's been gathered and gather, again, of course, what might move forward and, and see where we can go with that?
Yes, definitely. I, I have no issue with that, and it's a good idea, we can set up a study session prior, of course, prior to the October 26th meeting, so that we have more information.
Okay, that would be great. All right, did we get a final vote on this, Madam Secretary?
We did. I have, okay, I'll, you, you want to call for the vote again?
Yes, I, I believe that I did, but just, we'll just ask for another. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on, uh, Dr. Musalem?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Who is the 248 number that's on here?
I'm, sorry, I don't see, I don't see a 248 number. Oh, I do, I do...
It ends in eight-nine.
And it looks like it disappeared. I don't...
And if you go to, sorry, Mr. Chair, if you go to the top...
I'm a parent.
A parent?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Mine's at the very bottom. All right. I will ask that at this time, the parent that has that number, oh, now that looks like the number's just left.
Yeah, how did, how did a parent get into the meeting?
There's a phone number and a pin and Dave, David Green can control if there's.
I would, the only thing I would ask is that they know they mute themselves, so they can, you know, they, they don't interrupt the meeting while we're in this portion of the business meeting. All right, Dr. Mussum, I'll turn it right back.
Hey, yeah, let's move on here.
Okay, um, so yes, I have it in my notes and we will set up a study session on that.
Thank you.
So some informational items. First, we'd like to thank Mrs. Nancy Kay, Supervisor of Childcare and Programs, who is retiring. And we want to thank her for her services and her support for our preschool and childcare programs. Also want to wish the best of luck to Mrs. Maria Bajorik, our third grade cap teacher, who has resigned, and Mr. Robert Voss, our secondary science teacher, who has resigned. Both are taking on teaching positions in other districts. We take them for their service to the Crestwood Schools and wish them the best of luck in their next role. Some messages real quick. So yes, even though we're in a pandemic and we have this online schooling, it is homecoming week at the high school. So, you know, I want to give Mr. Fabris and the high school team for trying to keep it real, you know, trying to keep things happy and exciting as much as possible. So Monday is PJ Day, Tuesday is Marvel versus DC Day, Wednesday is Netflix Day, Thursday is Meme Day and Mr. and Miss Spirit nominations. Friday is Spirit Day and the Homecoming King and Queen crowning, as well as the Homecoming Game. And Saturday is Spirit, Spirit Jug winner announced. So the Homecoming Game is October 2nd against Robleshaw High School at 7:00 PM. Just want to remind everyone that according to MHSAA rules, only two spectators per athlete are allowed to attend the game. And our, our athletes will give the two spectators the pass to get in. We are continuing our mail distribution. Mail distributions are continuing Thursdays at Crestwood High School from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I want to thank the team for adding the 4:30 to 5:30 PM time, as we were finding some families needed a later time due to their work schedule. So we want to thank our team for doing that. As for Chromebook distribution, we are completing Phase Two of the Chromebook distribution, which means that 2,500 of our students who are in need of a Chromebook should have one. I am sad to say that we still have about 300 students who need a Chromebook and we're working something out at this time to try to get them a Chromebook. And we're looking, that would be part of the Phase Three distribution. And that Phase Three will also include possibilities of students to be able to come into school that do not have the technology, just so that they can get some access to technology a couple hours a day. We're working through some of those plans right now. Free COVID-19 drive, drive-through testing will occur Saturday, Saturday, September 26th and Sunday, September 27th. The Crestwood School District website has the flyer with all of the information, so please check that out. And finally, as my other, it's again, you know, this whole conversation about the pandemic. I, I'd like everyone to know that, you know, we do hear and we are listening to your concerns. We are doing everything in our power to meet the needs of all of our students. And I understand that there is some frustration and it's, it's understandable and it's, we respect it. And I will note that, you know, whenever parents send us concerns, we, we always, you know, ask that the principals and their teachers work directly with them, because our principals, our school administrators and our school teachers, you know, they know what's happening on a daily basis. And we're going to, we're continuously, and we're going to consistently address and adjust what we're doing to meet the needs of our students to the best of our capability. It's not perfect. It's not going to be perfect. We're trying to work towards perfection, so please understand that. And we're going to continue moving forward. It's not a situation we'd like to be in, but it's a situation that we're going to continuously address. So thank you and I appreciate the board's support. As well as I want the community to know that we're going to continue addressing and adjusting, as this is the first time we as a district and any district has gone through such, something as such. So no matter which district it is, no matter what district is doing, what, we're all finding that no matter what we're doing, there are some cracks, there are some, you know, issues that we all have to address and we're going to continue to address them. And I would like the community to know that we will be, each school, we will be working on a survey that will be sent to the community by each school to get some additional feedback on how things are going and where we need to adjust. And finally, what I'd like to say is, please, if you have any questions, comments, concerns or frustrations, please reach out to the school principal, your school, your child's teacher first. Reach out to your child's teacher. Usually you can address and what the needs are there first. And if you still feel you're struggling with that, then please reach out to your school principal. And then if you still feel you're struggling, then please reach out to our office. We're all working together on this. So thank you, everyone. And that is the conclusion of my message, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Mussum. And thank you to your administration. At this time, I'm going to now confer, or I'm sorry, ask Mr. Green, who is our tech coordinator, to ask if there are any questions from the general public at this time.
Yes, Mr. Garcia, we do have a few questions and comments. The first one is from Angela Clark. She says, when will the board share with parents the criteria to open doors for face-to-face learning? After the first trimester, will they be posted to the Board of Education website prior to November 1st?
All right, Mrs. Clark, I'm going to turn this question over to our superintendent. I believe it was addressed a few weeks back, but I will go back to our Superintendent, Dr. Mussum.
So in our very first meeting, we did discuss that each tribe we would assess. That has been adjusted, that it has to be reassessed once a month at a board meeting. So this is our first board meeting since the beginning of the Fall Online Learning Plan. Again, our next board meeting is October 26th. We will be sending out some surveys to parents. We will, we are collecting feedback that is coming into us and we will establish a study session prior to the October 26th board meeting, which would be the next vote. So we will be reassessing monthly and seeing what we can update. I don't have, and I'm sorry, there is no specific answer on what the criteria really technically is and when we're going to go back face-to-face or hybrid. There are so many moving parts with this, with outbreaks and different things, that we want to ensure that whatever we decide to do is a, is the safest environment for our children. But I would like to add something, Mr. Chair, Mr. Trustee Garcia. One of the dilemmas that we face at Crestwood is space. And that dilemma is because if we do bring students back, even in the hybrid format, we have to have six feet of separation between all students. And the dilemma we're going to face is that we don't have the infrastructure or the logistics to truly have six feet of separation for more than about 55% of our students at one time. So that is something that we also have to keep into consideration.
Thank you. And I do apologize, and because I did mean to read this prior to questions being asked. It's, the Board of Education would just like to remind those that, of the public, to refrain from asking questions or speaking directly, if they, in their letters, of course, when they send them to you. Regarding student staff, parent, remember, if there are any questions or concerns about specific staff, please reach out to your school's administration and/or human resources offices. With this in mind, we will not be reading off names of any staff members or members of the community. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, trustee Kaminsky.
I'm really sorry, but the 248 number is back online. And while I appreciate parent comments, this part of the meeting is left for the school board. Parents are to follow the rules to address their concerns online with the question and not to be part of the meeting.
Okay, I, I will say I don't see it, but I'm going to just instruct our technician, David Green, just to monitor and to let me know, and if that person can hear me.
They just, they just left.
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, how did they get the code and number?
Yeah.
That I don't know. I would have to, I, I mean, I can ask, which obviously it's already being heard, but Mr. Green, I, I don't know how that person would have received our information.
That's, that information is posted with the public meeting notice.
All right, so that's going to, okay, so it's public information. But for those of out in the general public that may be watching, please know that you are more than welcome to, you know, watch our, our meetings, but please follow the proper protocol, which is to submit your questions, concerns or comments, and then they will be asked to the board as well as our administration. All right, moving on, Mr. Green.
Okay, Angela also made a comment. She says, so far the teachers at Hillcrest are doing an excellent job in this environment. It can be very frustrating with the technology issues, such as loss of internet, touchpad doesn't work, or kids can't mute and unmute.
All right, thank you.
Yes, just to respond to that really quick, yes, that, those are some frustrating issues. We are aware of it. We're, we're adjusting on the fly. Mr. Green, he's on here and, once we get these issues, that's why I say, when you let your teachers and your administrators know what's happening, we look into it, we adjust it. As a parent of three at home, four at home, who are learning at home, I see that happening to them as well. So I, 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 all I can say is I do apologize. If, if I had the power, we would not be in this situation right now. I assure you that. So, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any others?
Yes, there are some more. Rima says, when are we going to be in person? I'm hoping my message will get somewhere. I'm writing, as a mother that has three children, plus I have homeschooling to take care of and other things in my life, this is not going to work. The kids are not learning. And to top it off, they don't believe us that they're in school and they don't listen to me. I don't want anyone to come after me and tell me that you're the mother and you can make them listen. I don't want to hear that. You're not in my shoes. Yes, I teach my kids. I sit with them like all other moms, but we're human and we have days. People, please tell me, when are we going to get going? We are wasting a whole year from my first grade son. He's not gaining anything from homeschooling. And when we go back to school in 2021, hopefully, the kids are going to be so behind. My son is a smart boy, but people, we need in-person school. We've been in school for one month and my kids didn't gain anything from online. Please don't waste time with this meeting and keep our hopes up to go face-to-face if you've already made your decision to be online all year.
Well, I believe that the question was answered by Dr. Mussum. Again, I, I'm going to refer back to that. Obviously, we didn't have to make, we did have to make this vote, but in the next process, or at least in this trimester, we'll be moving month to month. Dr. Mussum?
Excuse me?
Correct. And I, I can assure you this, and I did say this in the beginning of the pandemic, and it's a conversation that we're already having. We're already thinking about next year. We're already having conversations about what next year is going to look like or what it's going to look like when our students come back to the classroom. The reason why I say that is because we're already looking at staffing decisions to get additional supports in our classrooms to help all students. Because across the nation, across the world, but specifically across the nation, talking to my colleagues in other states, this is a conversation we're all having. Like, what are we going to do for our children? Because we know that online learning is not like face-to-face instruction. We know that. And at no time are we going to sell you a story telling you it is the same. We know it's not. So we're already having those conversations on how we're going to help our students. So I appreciate your concern and I understand. And please know, we don't, we're not just hearing you, we're listening to you too. We're, we're, we're thinking, we really are. And that's where we're going to be bringing in our parents and to help us with that conversation once something's settled. If I may add, and this may answer some questions going further, being that we're finishing up Week Four, going into Week Five now, and we've, you know, we've, you know, distributed 24 or 2,500 Chromebooks, instruction is going to start changing a little bit. It's going to start getting more rigorous. There's going to be more emphasis on different areas, because at this point, now 90% of our students will have the technology that they need. And we're coming up with alternative plans for the 10% that don't. So instruction is going to start changing and it's going to start looking a little different than it did in the first three, four weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
All right. Next, we have Ray Badun. She says, what should parents do if they have important appointments to go to or something urgent to take care of? Should we leave our kindergarten and first graders at home while they are online doing work? What if we can't afford sitters and don't have help to watch the kids? Online is not the answer for preventing COVID. Students don't see each other at school but are seeing each other after school or on weekends. This community is too intertwined with one another. If COVID was going to spread, it would spread regardless of being in the classroom or not. Parents should have the choice if they want their children in class or on the computer all day.
With that, I believe there was a survey, if I'm correct, Dr. Mussum, that, you know, the, I don't know if this parent had taken or was part of that, but the survey spoke for itself in regards to the health and welfare and safety of students in the returning back to school. Was there anything you would like to add to that, sir?
Just a thing to add is that, you know, when we do start looking at possible hybrid models, possible bringing students back, we also have to keep into consideration the health and welfare of the staff and which staff can be around multiple people. I know multiple staff members in our district, they're literally not going anywhere. And when they do come to the school, they go in their classroom and don't leave their classroom. Are there other staff that go places? Of course. I mean, we're all human beings. Everyone is handling the situation a little different. Where I, as a superintendent, and I struggle, my struggle is, I always fear what is the worst-case scenario for our students? Because that's my responsibility to put that burden on my shoulders. And I know our board is also putting that burden on their shoulders. So we will continue to reevaluate and reassess. I am sorry. I apologize. We're going to continue looking at one of the best scenario situations. And I, I, again, I don't have an answer for that and I'm not going to, I, I'm not going to make something up. It's a very difficult situation.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Okay. She also adds a comment. She says, I feel students need to be in class. We've been in school for a month and both my children has not learned anything. From what I've seen so far, this is going to put students further behind and will be a waste of a school year for both students and teachers. Teachers are working so hard, but it's not in their hands if there's so much technical difficulty or students simply don't want to sit and listen and learn in front of a screen.
So again, I want to reiterate, if there's any concerns, please reach out to the teacher, reach out to the school administration. And I do know there have been some situations where, you know, some parents have given some really nice ideas to some teachers and, and there, there have been adjustments made by teachers based on some ideas or recommendations that parents gave. Because again, the parents are at home with the children, the teacher isn't. So they're seeing things differently from a different lens than the teacher is. So we just, we'll continue working together. There is no one on this screen or in this call that is smarter than anyone else. All of us as a community, we have to put our minds together and look for positive outcomes. Got to look for positive outcomes. The negative, you know, negative outcomes are just not going to get us anywhere right now. And I just keep emphasizing positivity.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Yes, Zainab says, what is the plan for bettering education of students? Current students enrolled. My daughter received ripped supplies from school today and only one paper to learn her ABCs.
Again, I would please reach out to the school teacher and then to the school administrator and see what happened. And I'm sure there'll be a resolution to that concern.
Thank you.
Sana Noradine says, my daughter in kindergarten is only, only having a 30-minute live meeting with her teacher. All she gets is a day's, a day's worth all week long. What are her teachers doing all day long? Not only that, she has a broken whiteboard.
So again, I would reach out to the teacher and the school administration and have that conversation. I do want to say that one of the things that we've been emphasizing is that K4, specifically K3, not extensive screen time, because there's research that shows extensive screen time for K3 is actually detrimental. Now, if it's 30 days, 30 minutes for the whole week, that's a lot less than the recommendation. But again, please reach out to the school teacher and if you don't find a resolution, reach out to the school administrator. And if then you still don't find a resolution, please reach out to our office.
Thank you.
All right, she also adds a comment. She says, asking for. She says, asking for expansion sounds great, but you already had your shot with the previous millage, 35 million. What happened to that money? That's not acceptable that our kids will pay for poorer leadership and politics. Enough is enough.
Well, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mrs. Noradine, um, we hear you. This board, all seven, have worked diligently with our administrative team here at the superintendent's office to ensure that every I, I has been dotted, every T has been crossed. We are ensuring that every dollar spent now is accounted for and it goes back into our children's hands. And I will, we assure you this, that what we are looking at at this point, phases one and two, our goal is not asking the community for any money. That's our goal. Because of our reallocation of funding, again, we were able to secure, and you know, $800,000 from the previous bond to add items to the bond that were within the scope of the work to get more work done. Our schools have been going through a beautification process. Our heating and cooling units have been updated. Our bond work has been, is almost 90% complete. We should be complete by December. And I, as the superintendent, was hired by this board to ensure that we are fiscally responsible. And I, as a superintendent, am sitting here in front of everyone to say, the buck stops here, me as the superintendent. And I will ensure that we are fiscally responsible. Your children are my children. What I would do for my own blood child, I will do for every child in the Preston schools. Even though not everyone may agree. But I can assure you, what I do for your children is what I do for the four children that God has given me. So we assure you that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Green?
Yes, Eva Musa says, I am a parent of a child at Kenlock. I'm not happy that my daughter only has a live meeting with the teacher or the classmates for 30 to 40 minutes per day. It seems like this is a school schedule, not a specific teacher. Compared to Dearborn Public Schools, they have more live meetings, more interactions with kids and better supplies than us. Testing is taking a long time and the answer I get is thank you for your patience. My daughter didn't learn anything new since they started school. When are teachers going, what are teachers doing all day? I'm sure putting a pack out for two weeks doesn't take two weeks to get done. Why are we so behind compared to Dearborn Public Schools? As a district that has a higher income between families and families that are more educated.
So in response to that, what I would first request is reach out to Principal Marvaso. Principal Marvaso has done a phenomenal job reaching out to parents and talking with parents and and, and solving any concerns that there have been. If you still find that it is not being solved between the teacher and the principal, please reach out to our office. In reference to, um, what we're doing, I will say that I have zero doubt in my mind that the vast majority, over 90% of our staff are doing what needs to be done. Many are going above and beyond. And if there is any misunderstanding or mis-, uh, guidance in reference to whom your child is working with at Kenlock, again, I recommend you speak with that child's te-, your child's teacher, the principal, and again, if you do not find a resolution, please reach out to our office.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Um, Secretary Barry?
Yes, I'm, I'm hearing this from a few parents and it's, uh, it is concerning and I'm sure Dr. Musalem will handle it. Um, thank you for bringing it to our attention because we will definitely follow up and Dr. Musalem will definitely follow up. So we do hear you, we are listening and, uh, thank you for giving us the insight. But like Dr. Musalem said, please, please, please let that teacher know what is going on. If you're not happy with it, then go to the administrator and Dr. Musalem will follow up and, um, we're listening. So thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Green?
Nabila Fawaz says, any hope of hybrid for elementary level? I've been patient for the last month to get online with more live sessions and we are the, in the same places in the spring. Busy work and no teaching. I know teachers are working hard and they are being told working hard as they are being told, but there is still no clear-cut plan in place. Now with NWEA, that's taking priority for the next two weeks, delaying teacher, teaching for another two weeks. While other districts have fully started teaching or phasing in students, we are a small district which should make it easier to phase in students or start teaching online. I believe if elementary was able to go to school for two or three half-days a week, it would be very beneficial. I wish I was able to speak live because I am grateful for the staff's work. Just feel that there is more that we can do.
And, uh, yes, um, again, being that we have, were able to distribute the 2,500 Chromebooks, things are going to start becoming, they're going to start changing a little bit more. Uh, we, we, I just want to reiterate, you know, in before this pandemic hit, we as a district only had 300 Chromebooks for the entire district. And all those 300, maybe 200 were working properly. And with everyone ordering this technology, you know, the, the 2,000 that we received, I'm grateful for when we received them. And I believe that we're going to start turning the page now. I'd also, I'm, and I am, like Trusty Barry said, I do hear you and I am listening. And we are meeting with the administration to have these conversations about next steps. I do want to mention something really quick about the NWEA. Please note, the NWA is being used for our teachers to understand where our students are so they can adjust their instruction and their strategies to meet them at their needs. Additionally, according to the legislation that was passed for this COVID learning environment, we have to use something like the NWEA within the first nine weeks of school. It is a mandate by the state that we must do. So as I do agree with you that it is slowing down instruction. It's not a choice that we have and we must do it. But what I can say is the data we receive from the NWEA is going to be used to adjust our instruction as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Um, the, uh, my apologies.
Okay. The next question, we may have addressed it. Um, what are we doing to speed up the distribution of Chromebooks to our students? I have three children, but only one has received a Chromebook so far. We are a month into the school year and they have not learned anything at all. They are still working on review packets. Also, it's difficult to manage packets and online meetings when we are working parents and have our own schedule as well. Teachers and schools have set up their schedules for packet pickups and testing drop-off and pickups, but some of us don't have the ability to come and go from work. And all three of my kids attend Kenlock.
So I would highly recommend that in that situation, please reach out to the teacher, let them know, and they will, as we have created alternate schedule times and/or we have dropped off materials as well. We have staff that can do so.
All right.
If I may for a moment?
Yeah, just a second, uh, Trusty Kaminsky. Uh, David, just one second because there was a question. Uh, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Um, I have two grandkids in the Trenton schools, which is a very financially lucrative district. And they have not received any Chromebooks. Every school in the United States just about, um, has tried to get Chromebooks. They are in short supply. We are so fortunate that we have received the Chromebooks that we have because our administration got them early. And I'm not just giving you some patsy of an answer. That is the truth. So it is not a, a great answer. It is not the way we want it, but it could be worse. And we are trying in every way to get more Chromebooks, to get more online access that we possibly can. So just understand that, um, if you have a school district that you know of and you think they're doing better, there's a lot of school districts out there. And I'm sure if you talk to the parents that they have issues. Trenton is hybrid and the kids go two half-days, uh, a week for four hours and the rest of the week is packets. So it's, it's not an ideal situation either. Thank you.
And if I could, board members, let's just hold off our questions and comments and allow for the general public to do theirs and we will have a moment shortly. Uh, Mr. Green?
Okay, I think we are all set. There are some comments that did not adhere to the guard, guidelines. So I think we'll probably address those offline.
All right, thank you.
Otherwise, we're all set.
All right. Um, Mr. Chair, I'll make sure that we share that document with the board.
Yes, thank you. Also, also if you could, I don't know how the board feels about this, so, but I, I, my question would be, uh, just to make sure that those that did, we did respond to them, uh, those, what did I count, six? Uh, that somehow they know that we did respond and hopefully they'll, they'll be able to somehow navigate through all of this, but know that their questions were asked and and you was answered for them. All right. Uh, now with that, are there any questions from the Board of Education to our administration?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yeah. Yes.
I wanted to, um, I received a couple of calls about the beautification that Dr. Musalem spoke of. Uh, people are really noticing the buildings are beautiful. I know that the custodial staff and maintenance staff have, uh, put a lot of time and effort into it. So kudos to them for that and to our leadership, um, at the schools. I, again, I see reports. The middle school, I know that, uh, Mr. Awada has hit the ground running. Um, very intense, uh, reports, um, very detailed. I, like I say, I, I, I walk your days with you from reading what you have to say. Thank you for everything you're doing. These are not easy times. These are very hard decisions to make. Um, we have to think of the staff and we have to also think, um, when we do come back, we have to have that plan in place that if staff were to get sick, um, I know I work in a district and people are, if, if things don't work out for them, they plan on leaving, retiring. Um, and will we be able to fill all that? So these are concerns that I do have and now that I would like to see us discuss so we can move into the next phase. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Just, uh, and just because I was not able to stop you talking, there's a lot of background noise. I don't know who's muted or.
Yeah, who is that?
I hear children in the background.
Yes, all through the whole meeting.
All right. Uh, Mrs. Kaminsky, you had.
Um, I think Mrs. Fawaz was saying something.
Okay, just one second here. I gotta navigate, uh, Mrs. Fawaz, Trusty Fawaz?
That, that might have been mine, but, um, uh, uh, just on a different topic, I, I know that we focused heavily, heavily on the elementary kids. But, um, just to also ask for high school. Um, I know with this having started the last trimester, um, last year, I, I guess I'd like to know, um, did we have a lot of students, um, fail? And I know we have a really, I know Crestwood has a really good, um, recovery plan with, uh, I think the teacher is Mr. Elliott, right? Um, I, I know that there's a really good recovery. Did we have a lot of students that needed to recover or do we have some in that situation right now or like just for people to know, like there, there, there's a plan B if their stu-, if their older child, you know, didn't do as well or like how, what's the status of that program?
For the third try, it was agreed upon in all district, well, over 90% of the districts across the nation actually, um, did a, did a, uh, a credit, no credit. We didn't give grades. And that was because of the equity issues. So therefore, if students submitted their work, they received credit. And through that process and that, the end of that last try was if students weren't submitting their work, there were multiple attempts to reach out to the family, to the students. People visited their homes to get them to do the work. Those students that did not get credit did have an opportunity to go through the credit recovery online learning through a program that's called E2020. As we move forward, our recovery program is no longer going to be focused on online recovery through like, uh, because what that online is, is there's no teacher. You do all the work remotely and we're going to be moving to more of a credit reco-, we're going to be moving to a credit recovery system where students have to take a class with a teacher. So that they're going to be able to get instruction from a highly qualified teacher, not from an online, no teacher course.
But they, in the past, they've been very successful with that, right? And then plus you save heavily on, um, cost of the teacher.
Uh, no, you don't because you have to pay for each one of those E2020 classes and you have to pay for the person that's running the class. Moreover, um, we want to increase rigor in our high school. Students knowing that they're going to fail a class and then they can go take the class online does not increase rigor. Because then the students have an easy way out. We want our students to be, have rigorous instruction in, during the regular school day as well as if they fail the class. And through this process, it will enhance and increase our instruction as well as our rigor, as well as reduce our attendance issues. Because students were not showing up to class and saying, oh, I can just take this class online at home when I want. And, and we want students to understand that rigor comes first.
So are you implementing a new school?
It is something that we are developing that we're going to be bringing to study session when, uh, near the end of the first try. Yes.
Thank you. Um, Trusty New? Questions?
Yes, uh, sorry, real quick. Um, Dr. Musalem, I know we have, have we began the instructional day support? Have, we've already begun? Okay. Well, so, so I was just wondering, how many do people, students do we have in the instructional day support program?
Currently, we have 11 in one classroom and we have 15 in the other classrooms. We're at 26 right now.
So are those the only people that were qualified to join the instructional day support?
Correct. So what happened was we had 156 people who responded that they would like.
Yeah.
Of that 156, many did not have work verification. So automatically it went to those who had work verification first. And then many others went, backed out when they, they, they just felt keeping their child home would be better for their child. So after all that went through, it ended up we were at 26.
So is this a, they, they have to pay to put them?
There, there is a cost, but it, I believe, and please, I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize, I might be off, but I believe it's $15 a day is the cost. Where other, other places charge like $15 an hour.
Right. So we weren't gonna, we weren't willing to open it up to people who are working or need it for other reasons, but still are willing to pay.
So the problem is only, the reason why we did this is because of space and because of staff that was willing to work this program. And the staff that's working this program are not our teachers. They're paraprofessionals or they're non-instructional staff. If we put our instructional staff into this program, then they're not going to be able to teach their classes. And then this program has multiple, you know, the, the, the ages of these students are from kinder up through fourth grade. So you have a variety of students that are in this program. And, uh, the purpose behind this program was to help the families of highest need who either single parent or both parents work and don't have anyone that can watch their child. And it was to help in this process. And I believe we're one of very few districts that is doing this.
Right.
We just, we couldn't open it up anymore. I mean, at this point, I mean, I'm, I, you know, we could probably open up one more section. And Kristen Frisell has been doing a phenomenal job of, 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 of handling this. But it comes down to having the staff available to man the class.
So only have 26 students that are in the.
26 students currently. 11 in one class, 15 in the other.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I believe just, Ms. Trusty Kaminsky, I thought you had your hand up? Oh, your, your, your mute button. I'm sorry, your mute button is on.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, echo and thank administration. I know this has been very difficult and very trying. Um, and to let the parents know that, you know, we want to thank you too because your schedules have had to be adjusted as well. Um, I've had to work with my grandchildren on, you know, being online, well, not online with their packets, but it's, it's a hard thing to adjust everyone's schedule. So we do hear you, we do empathize and we're trying our best. And thank you again to administration at all the levels for your continued work and your patience and your diligence with our kids.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I will just, just make a, a brief comment. Yes, thank you to the administration. And as we have spoken before, things have changed and things continue to change. It's not going to remain the same. It's going to be rather fluid as we, as we progress into the semester and into 2021. Um, but I believe that you've done what needs to be done and. But I believe that you've done what needs to be done in regards to this health and, and safety and the welfare of the students and the staff, and those that, um, come in contact with our school buildings, uh, on a daily basis. So, uh, I commend you for that, and, and for those that are watching, uh, please know, uh, as was mentioned by several members of the administration, as well as our board members. Uh, we are doing our best, because it, it does change, and we will continue to do our best uh, for the health and welfare and safety of those students and staff that are in our building. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
There was, uh, I'm sorry, I, I heard two.
It was Mrs. Crisanna, and I, I supported.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Kaminsky, all those in favor signify by saying.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, administration. Thank you, board members, and until next time, we will see you soon. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.